Call this public hearing to order. Item number two, establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that present are Oscar Caballero, Andrew Gonzalez, Isidoro Nieto, and myself. Item number three, public hearing on the optional flexible school day program. Dr. Leo.
And I will defer for additional information. Actually, conducting the public hearing will be Ms. Brewer.
We're here today to discuss the information on the optional flex school day program. Can you change? Can you change that? Oh, no, no, I got it right here. Well, I've got the PowerPoint. You all have copies of the PowerPoint?
Yes.
So I'll just go over the PowerPoint here. Basically, the optional flex school day program is a method of accounting for attendance. It's an alternate way of accounting for attendance for students that are highly at risk. This was, this came into effect back in May of 2006. Wesleyco ISD has participated in this program for six consecutive years. So if approved tonight, this coming school year will be the seventh year for the optional flex school day program. And I'm going to review specifics about the program. The program is for students that have dropped out of school, that are at risk of dropping out of school, or for those students that have been denied credit due to excessive absences. So, as you know, the state expects us to graduate 100% of the students. That is a goal that we have here at Wesleyco ISD. Therefore, this particular program helps those students that are in great need and cannot attend school every day. We have students at times that are parents, they're teenage parents, and they work all day long. And at times, the only time they can attend school is from four to six o'clock, for example. So if they participate in this program, we will not be, we will not be, they will not be counted absent. We will not be penalized for them not attending school every day. They give us credit for the number of minutes that they are in attendance and don't penalize us for absences. The program goals are for graduation rates, to improve graduation rates, and of course to reduce the dropout rate. The optional flex school day program, it, as you know, students attend school every day. Students that participate in this program would have a flexible schedule that meets their individual needs. If we have students that can attend school Tuesdays and Thursdays only because they have full-time jobs Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, then we can enroll them in such a plan and only give, we only receive credit for the number of minutes that they are in attendance. We do ask them to be in attendance, a minimum of 45 minutes. We cannot have them come in 10, 15 minutes and give them credit. We do expect them to attend at a minimum of 45 minutes, but we strongly encourage them to at least attend a two-hour timeframe at a time because there's not much that we can do with them for 45 minutes. Most of these students participate in self-paced programs such as A+ or Adventum. Right now, we've incorporated Adventum, which is a self-paced program, and they do the work on their own, at their own, at their own pace. These students are required to take the state exams, the STAR and, of course, exams, and they can also participate in UIL if they meet UIL eligibility. We have to apply every year to TEA. There's an application that needs to be submitted. A public hearing needs to be, needs to take place, and if approved by the board, we sign that application and submit it to TA. This is an annual process. They want to know how many students participate, and I have that in the next slide. It only helps a handful of students, but we like to have it available for the majority of our students if the, if there is a need. For 2015-16, we had about 14 students participate at Wesleyco High, two at East, and three at South Palm Gardens. These students participate in the STAR tax credit recovery program, STAR tax remediation program. Right now, on the application, I indicated there are 100 slots for Wesleyco High and 100 slots for Wesleyco East, and about 50 slots for South Palm Gardens. I tend to increase the number of slots just in case the need is there, but it's only, we don't promote it for all students, only those that are in high need of a flexible schedule. Any questions?
Yes. So if a child, you know, is, I guess, runs into some issues during their high school years or senior years, do the counselors, they go in and talk to these kids, or do they have to go to the counselors to, are they aware of the program, the kids?
The students that are struggling, we do have counselors at each campus that are assigned by small learning communities, and those counselors reach out to the students based on their, they follow up on other students that are struggling. They bring them in. If the student presents that there is a need, "Ma'am, I can't come to school because I have a full-time job, I have a child," then the counselor can make this program available for them. Yes. Any other questions?
Do we know about, like, the numbers, like, let's take this last year. Juniors, they were juniors two years ago, and they should have graduated this year.
Mm-hmm.
How many of those kids did not graduate?
I can, I can definitely research that and place something on the board update. I don't have the numbers.
I know, like, at Wesleyco East, there's only two kids that participated in there.
Every year, we have the senior class, and then we have about 50, 60, maybe 70 students that are still classified as juniors, but they're supposed to be seniors, that are part of the graduation class, but they don't have enough credits to graduate. I can check to see how many of them did not make it. I don't have that number with me, and we can definitely include that in the board update.
Okay. And most of the time, we reach out to the current cohorts?
Mm-hmm.
Like, this year would be the 15 and the 14 cohort, students that did not finish because they didn't pass their STAR, or they didn't finish their credits, correct?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, at the beginning of the school year, the state expects us to graduate, like I said, 100% of the students. So any students that did not graduate in 2016, we have to look for them and make sure that they're enrolled by the school start window, which is about the third or fourth, the third Friday of September. So we only have a very short window to try to recover all of those students and make sure that they're either continuers or that they graduate. So having this program available, we can make it available for those students that cannot come to school every day, and if we enroll them in the regular program, well, they have to be in attendance every day, or we're penalized with absences. But under this program, they, there is some flexibility. We only get credit for the number of minutes that they're actually in attendance.
And that's when you do the home visits to target those students that are not back?
Yes, sir. We have teams of employees that go out there the first few weeks of school to try, it's our LEVER task force. They go out there, make home visits, and they recover the students that have dropped out or that have not graduated. And all of that needs to be finalized by the school start window.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brewer, how many of these, like, these 14 or two or three that participated met all the requirements to graduate? Do you know?
We had at least three of them that graduated, but some of them are still testing even this week.
Right.
So, we had about three of them that graduated.
Okay.
So it doesn't, we don't promote it to all because we want all of our students to enroll in school all day long so that they can highly benefit from our programs, but it helps a handful of students.
How do we receive ADA for these students?
It's based by, we submit a report at the end of the year through teams, and it's based by the number of minutes that they're in attendance. So we have to keep track of all of their minutes of attendance, and that's how they reimburse us.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. If you don't have any questions, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For the record, actually, the meeting started at 5:22. I did not state that at the beginning. We are on, we just finished item number three. Item number four is public comments on the report. If there's anybody in attendance that would like to come up and make any comments regarding the optional flexible school day program as presented, now is your chance. Any other comments or discussion? If not, then we will move on to item number five, adjournment.
So move.
It's 5:32, and this meeting is now adjourned. So, workshop, budget workshop. Proposed budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017, no quorum is necessary, this is a workshop.
And board members, Mr. Andres Sanchez will lead the discussion on this topic.
This is a second workshop on the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2016, 2017. You should have gotten two handouts. One is a combined presentation of PowerPoint in PDF files, and the other one is an agenda that basically details the item that I'm going to follow. I'm going to try to go by the PowerPoint because it's got more information on details so that you can follow. Some of the slides, in fact, most of them, are information that I had provided in the past, so I'm going to go through it faster, and I'll highlight the ones that are different. And you can stop me, of course, at any time with questions. On the, you all know that the budget for the school district is based on revenues from ADA, attendance of students, also tax collections from our taxpayers, and the state funding that we get related to the ADA and the property tax collections. Our budget is based on 16,180 ADA. It's a conservative number compared to last year. Last year, our total ADA for our best four, six weeks was 16,334, as indicated on the right column of the table on page two of the PowerPoint presentation. And that, that figure, the 16,340, includes also the ADA generated by the Elfa Academy, which was 107 ADA. On the next page, the property values that we're using are preliminary. The appraisal district gave out numbers as of April, and they're expecting to release the certified values by July 27. So the figures might change. Need they change, I have to do calculations when we come back from the vacation break, the first week of August, and I'll get back to you with more information on any update that I need to do. But right now, there's a preliminary increase in values, about almost 6%. It went from $2,588 million values to $2,178 million in property values. The tax rate we're using is 1.1397, and it's all the maintenance and operations, MNO. We do not have any tax rate for INS. Our property taxes are based on the current collections, current taxes collections are 91%. At the previous workshop, I had indicated 92%, but then the board told me to go back to conservative number of 91, so we changed it. Delinquent tax collections are budgeted at 28%, 20% of the collections from the taxpayers. Workers' comp is going to be increased by $200,000, the contribution. Athletic insurance, which is a big expenditure, did not have an increase this year, is the same as last year. We would like to increase the undesignated fund balance by the end of the year by half a million dollars that we have been doing for the last three years. So with that, our fund balance, unassigned, undesignedated, will reach $17 million by the end of the fiscal year. And also, our contribution for health insurance for employees will increase by approximately $1,375,000, going from $380 per month per employee to 430. And this is needed because of the increases in medical costs that we have had throughout the year. Slide four shows information about TA and the money we earn on the INS fund from INS taxes. TA did some back calculations on what was called unequalized tax collections. Those are taxes that are collected throughout the year and not used in the calculation that generates the state funds for us, and they're able to use that to generate IFA and EDA funding. And we were able to get $4.6 million for, including prior years, through the end of last year. So because of that money that we have, we don't have to transfer as much money to the debt service fund for the payment on bonds that we have been doing in the past. Last year, we transferred $4.5 million from the general fund to the debt service fund. This year, we will only transfer half a million. The savings there, the $4 million, we will transfer to the construction fund for construction of facilities or repair of facilities, depending on what the board decides.
If you do that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't want to miss this. If we do throw that, throw that into the construction budget, does it have to stay there, or can we move that later on if we need it for something else?
Well, we just put it in construction, the board can move it back to whatever.
But as far as when you, when you use something in a designated fund balance?
Well.
Can it be moved back, or is this something different?
This is, this is not the undesignedated. This is just a transfer to the construction. We can transfer back. We wouldn't use it over there. The undesignedated fund balance that we have, unassigned and designated, that I said had $4 million right now, that's for whatever the board wants to do, the facilities or other needs. This was because the board has said we need to do facilities, we budgeted for that already. But if the board decides, it can be brought back. As long as we have any current costs over there, we can take it back.
I just want to make sure that there's still some, that we can, I don't want to designate it as something if...
Well, right now, it's...
Only, like, if we need it for something else, that we can't move it. So I just want to make sure that it's still something that's fluid.
If the board wants, we can just, we can leave it as a surplus budget, approve it with the extra $4 million that could be used for something else, and it just hasn't been budgeted, or it can be taken back.
Okay.
Because it's something that the board approves.
The way you're doing it is fine. I think that the needs are going to be there anyway.
Yes.
But if something comes up in our budget, budget process, I want to be able to...
Okay, yes.
...allocate if we have to.
And the second, the last item on that page, that, well, I'm looking at my report. There you go. We expect a surplus of $4.5 million by the end of the year in the general fund, and that added to the fund balance assigned for facilities, and the $4 million that we're looking at transferred to construction, that will be $12.5 million available total for facilities or other needs.
So $12 million will be for facilities?
Could be used for facilities, yes. Right now, we're setting it up like that, but like, with what you said, we can take some money back if needed.
Okay.
On page five, we have listed the pay, first item is the pay increases for staff. We did a conservative projection of pay raises, and we used $500 for teachers, librarians, campus technology coordinators, and administrators, 1% of the midpoint, and paraprofessional many trades, technical trade staff of 3% of the midpoint. The total gross pay for those pay raises is about $1.5 million. That's something that the board can decide to keep like that, increase, or the board decides what to do. The next item, all the schools, we allocate an amount to them that is separate from payroll, utilities, and other operating expenditures. We call it the basic allocation. It is something that the schools can allocate whichever way they want, whether it is for the instruction, the library, the counselor, the principal's office, the need they have, they distribute, or they see fit. We use this amount, we base it based on ADA for the schools, and we set aside, for elementary schools, $120 for ADA, middle schools, 135, and high schools, 200. And separately from that, we set an amount for band, for the high schools and middle schools. They also get a separate amount besides this one, and it's allocated to the schools and the middle schools.
Standard allocations are usually fine, I mean, when you're talking about assigning monies.
Uh-huh, yes.
Do we, do we talk to our principals and make sure that there's not a unique outlier, like there's a specific need or some sort of a demand that's not going to be able to be funded by that standard allocation? I mean, I would like for you to talk to the principals and just get their input and just say, you know, "Hey, we're, we're talking about a standard allocation, I understand." I'm just saying that if there's a specific need that is unique, that would blow a budget, that would extend past the budget they're being allocated, just make sure that there's not something significant out there that we, we need to set aside some, some money just for that particular condition.
So in the past, some of the items we had had to do with facility, like the tile, things like that, that we hadn't been able to do because we were short on money, or some things had to do with some training, some developments, and we've been setting up money aside for that. So we haven't gone into perhaps every little detail that they have, but if they do need something, they come to us, usually go to the superintendent, and we work with them.
Correct. Just, just ask.
Yes. At the bottom of the page, and it's unread, I forgot to change it. We had participated in a survey at Regent One that they did on June 30 on proposed pay raises. We filled it in with, looking at possibility to get information of what other schools do, and in order to get information from other schools, you have to participate in what the survey they said. So we contributed it in, in another presentation that I have at the end, I have the survey there, and you have a copy in the, kind of there. The proposed raises that we have are the lowest on the district that responded. Not only the district responded, because some of them were closed for vacation, but the ones that did respond were, were low. Page six shows facilities. The top part is the amount that we had for several years.
Andres, before you go any further, I know, because you have it here at the bottom, and you're just stating, so in that survey, you're saying we're the lowest as far as the amount that we are proposing?
Yeah, we have listed right now.
Just for the raises, right?
Yes, for the raises.
The survey doesn't show how we rank?
No, it doesn't talk about pay raises.
How we rank as, as far as currently?
Hours?
No, right.
No, this is just for the, I guess, one of the lists is asked on June 29, and they were closing on June 30, so they did a quick survey for that, and that's all they asked for. Sometimes they ask for tax rate, salary, different things. This one, that's all they have.
You can just, for the update, see where we rank amongst the RGV as far as current salaries.
Current salaries, yeah.
Please.
I also had a question, Andres.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to go back real quick, but it's, it's on the bands.
Uh-huh.
You had allocated some money for the high school bands.
Yes.
I think we had planned like $100,000 for Wesleyco High School and...
That was last year. We allocated $100,000 for instruments for both high school bands.
Right.
And we gave it to them.
Right, but what, I, I think we had talked about doing it like two or three years or something like that, wasn't it?
Hmm, I don't remember that. I, I, what I thought was last year only. I did not set it up for this year.
Right, and that's, that's what I, that's what I think that we had agreed on, at least doing another year or so. But, yeah, we'll, we'll keep that in the mind. I don't know if we can go back to the minutes that we did last time or whatever. It was last year's budget.
Yeah, on the proposal last year, we had set a criteria of how much each year for, I believe it was three years.
Three years for $100,000. I don't think with $100,000, they were going to be able to, I know we have some big equipment that they need to purchase that are just...
Yeah, we had a lot of needs, we had a lot of needs in the band, so we had agreed that we couldn't get everything at one time, so we were going to split it up into three years of $100,000 to each.
Go back and check the minutes.
Ms. Morales, you know how much, or Dr. Gattu, how much you all received this year for a band this past year?
$16,000.
Right?
$100,000.
But that was just for instruments, right?
Instruments, specifically, besides this.
Aside from their budget, can y'all go back to, to the band directors and see where we're at with instruments that maybe need replacement? Maybe it's not $100,000, Andres, maybe it's only $50,000 this year that they're in dire need of. If y'all don't mind, please, and maybe send it to Andres so that he can give us an update.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Caballero, that answered the question?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, just, yeah.
Okay, on page six, the top part talks about the facility money we had set aside in the construction fund from prior years, and it's still one, almost $2 million for the central old gym, Bobby Lucky Stadium restrooms, and fire alarm upgrades. The bottom part has the $12.5 million discussed earlier from money transferred to construction fund from the general fund, money available in the fund balance available for facilities or other needs, and expect a surplus at the end of this year.
Andres, where we at with the central, with the central gym?
We haven't done anything with it.
There's no plan or anything, you told me?
We had to move forward with it. We had, I mean, but we need to revisit it. So when we start talking about facilities and moles in here, you know, we'll have to reassess, you know, how we want to move forward with that project, because I think we had been kind of considered as a learning center.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll have to revisit that.
Okay. On page seven, we had the board mention, Mr. Lopes had mentioned, I believe, at the last workshop, when we're discussing fund balance assigned for facilities, about security at the schools. Some of our administrators visited a couple of schools, specifically Sherland, I forgot the other one, to see what they have, and they came up with a budget amount of $45,000 to provide magnet security lock for the, for the schools. And he came up with about $45,000 for 22 campuses, I believe. So that's an amount that we have to set it up in the budget for that. Also, we have $125,000 that we want to set aside for cameras, surveillance cameras for special ed classes. You know, there's a lot of the legislature passed that if a parent, somebody, a teacher requests a camera, we have to provide it. So we want to have the money available if it's needed so we can provide the cameras as needed.
Andres, what are security magnets? Every school district is different. That's why, which ones did you all look at specifically for the security magnets? Because some, some schools use their ID, and, and that's what opens the doors, but...
What we looked at were 600-pound magnetic door locks, they're operated by remote control, and with that, that price includes a camera as well that will overlook the area, say the front door of an elementary, somebody comes in and they're buzzed, and the picture and the intercom goes to designated person, and then they buzz them in or out.
So I'm assuming that's just the main entrance or the main door to the, each campus?
Correct.
Okay.
That's for every school?
Yeah, every school.
That's, $45,000 is not a lot, but, you know...
Yeah, they run about 1,200 per magnetic lock installed, and then, of course, you add the camera and the intercom system.
Okay.
And this is to all the front doors?
Right. The front entrance to each school.
The front entrance, the main entrance to each school.
Right, not the side, not the side doors.
Because every, every other entrance is supposed to be locked already.
What about high school?
Except, and that's what I was going to say, except high schools a little...
The high school's going to, the high school's going to be a little bit differently. We're looking at, along with, along with this camera is the raptor system where people come in, they swipe their ID, and it prints them out a badge. We're planning on controlling that from the guard shacks at the high schools.
So when they drive in, since most schools are gated already?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, the high school's going to get somebody.
The item in the middle on the page seven is to remind us, we have a list of facility needs for projects that were included in the bond election that we'd like to discuss with the board, future workshop for facilities, so the board can provide guidance on how we can prioritize the use of the funds for repair or construction of facilities. And then the last bullet on the page is some additional facilities that we were discussing last week and that we have been talking about before, we just finally came up with numbers last week, for facility needs that will be needed somewhere within the next six to 18 months, and these are not included in the budget yet. And this is replacing the turf at Lucky Stadium, it's about, estimate about $500,000. Some system for Lucky Stadium, you know, we have, we've been having problems with that sound, so we need something better, and we looked at a couple of systems, and the estimate is $120,000. A scoreboard for the stadium, the one we have is already 10 years old, and it's already to, beginning to give us trouble. We don't want to run out of scoreboard in the middle of the games that we have, so we might have to replace it by the end of the football season, the upcoming season. And then the billboard that is on the corner northwest of Lucky Stadium, we're looking at doing a digital billboard that we can use to advertise a lot more, our school district, our staff, our children, our activities, and not having to pay by paper that we print and have to take it down every two weeks, every four weeks. We can do a lot more advertising, it's more expensive at the beginning, but it can serve serve us a lot better and save us money.
That's what I was going to say, Andres, on, on these needs right here, I mean, I think that these are real important needs, because I know our turf is overdue, right, Coach? I mean, I've, I've been out there, and it's in pretty bad shape, and it's, it's, needs to get replaced. Our sound system, you know, when we're out there at the games, it's very hard to hear anything. And, or our scoreboard, I've been around, and, you know, on the seven-on-seven with my son and stuff like that, and a lot of districts are catching up to us and have, you know, scoreboards that are...
Coach, how many times have you replaced anything with the scoreboard? And/or turf and/or sound system? Because I know they've, I know they've cut off, you know, during the National Anthem, stuff like that, I've seen a black spot before.
Yeah. The scoreboard, you know, it's, it's worked really well for us, Mr. Gonzalez, we've had it for ten years roughly. It's mechanical, it's electron, electronical, it's outdoors, it's in the weather, so sometimes we do have mechanical issues with the scoreboard. We, we also took a, trying to prevent future problems, we had a very bad problem with pigeons. We had pigeons roosting on the scoreboard on top. Well, it's very hard to get up to the very top, and so what was happening was as their droppings were dropping on the wiring, it's in conduit, but you know how that stuff is very corrosive? It was eating through the, through the conduit, and so we were having problems, electronical problems because of that. We fixed that, that, you know, it's, it's gotten a lot better. But to answer your question, we do go through some hiccups throughout the year. A lot of the times, I, I do believe a lot in prayer, and I sit there and I pray for the game, and I say, please work. Because we do have some times where, where it, it's kind of broken up into, into modules, they're called modules, and these modules, they're pretty much their own little entities. And so, sometimes, like you mentioned, you'll have a black spot on the screen, well, it's a module that's going bad, so we do have to replace it.
You can't just repair that, you got to replace the whole thing?
Right, you got to take the whole module out and replace it. And we've gotten better at it, now we have modules and standby in the press box, so, just to be safe.
And how old is our turf?
Our turf is also about ten years old, it's going on ten years old. We have a company that'll be here tomorrow, Hellas Construction will be here tomorrow, a little more information, but we go through an annual routine cleanse and, and shampoo, and also, it's a huge magnet, and basically what it does is it picks up any debris that falls on the turf. And, you know, you, you get a lot of snaps from the helmets, bobby pins from the cheerleaders, and, you know, stuff falls on the turf, you don't see it, but it's there. So, that, they'll be here tomorrow, they'll do a, takes them about two days, but to answer your question, it's ten years old. Luckily, back then, superintendent prior to Dr. Rivera and the board, took, took it to the, to the best possible level that you can, when we, when we built that turf, and we put an E-layer underneath. We're one of the only schools in the valley that has an E-layer pad underneath the turf. Because of the E-layer pad, that's what's kind of kept us from, you know, we're still a very, very safe facility. Yes, our turf is getting worn, it's ten years old. At the time that we purchased it, it was the best that we could purchase, but now it's ten years old, and technology has advanced, and so, but, you know, still safe, doesn't look the greatest, but it's still safe.
And the good thing about all, a lot of this stuff is that, a lot of this stuff can pay for itself, am I right? You know, with, you know, the ads that we sell and stuff like that, or the sponsors, the sponsorships and stuff like that?
I think the scoreboard, that's how it was, I believe, the last time, I was paid for it through ads, but not, not the turf or...
No, no, but I'm talking about like the, like the scoreboard and...
Dr. Rivera, do you remember? Because that was probably when you were the superintendent, no? How long did it take? Because when you went full-blown, because that was the biggest, the best at the time, how long did it take to pay it off?
About five years.
That's tough. Through advertisement?
Yes, so the money now, where's it going?
It's, it's budgeted for expenditures of the district, it's not...
So, it's not going back to, like, back to athletics?
No, well, we do provide additional money for the scoreboard, for K-Ways, for different things.
That was a plan for the advertisement, to pay for itself. In the next five years, you would save the money to go back and buy another turf. So, you all didn't use it that way?
No, no, we, we budgeted the money for revenues of the school district.
Yeah, but that was, that should have been used for another turf. So, how much do you make right now on the average per year for advertisement? On the Jumbotron? Used to be about, used to be about a hundred thousand dollars per year. You're still there, a hundred thousand?
Yes, sir. We're about a hundred, hundred twenty thousand right now, we're making up, that we're going to, that's our projected for this year for our scoreboard.
See, in five years, that money could have been, you would already have near seven hundred thousand to buy a new, a new turf. So, I don't know where the money went. I think, I think McKellen, the new scoreboard in McKellen, got paid through advertisement, the, the, just a brand-new one, this, I think, this past year?
Mm-hmm.
I believe what they did was they sold the rights.
They did.
They sold the name rights.
Okay.
I, I know McKellen's scoreboard is forty-three feet wide. Of course, Wesco's the best of the best and everything, so ours is going to be forty-eight feet wide, the biggest one south of San Antonio. So, that's what we're looking at. We're working on that project right now to get you some numbers pretty soon. The digital screen, we spend sixty thousand a year on the plastics, you know, that's a lot of money, we can only put the kids up every three weeks with a digital, it's, it's only three hundred and sixty thousand, and we can run fifteen, twenty programs constantly all the time, because Wesco's so successful, so we want those kids to be advertised. So, I think that sixty thousand, we pay it off in five years, too.
I know during graduations, Mr. Fuentes and I were talking about that digital, you know, billboard, and like we were saying about the advertisement and stuff like that, it'll pay for itself, you know? At the same time, we, you know, show her, you know, show off our kids, and then, you know, and then someone that wants to advertise and, you know, just constant.
You're not allowed to advertise up on that one, right?
Not on the digital scoreboard, but we, we can advertise on our, on our scoreboard every time we turn it on. We also have an exciting game day booth that we're going to put up. Mr. Obleto and I have been discussing it, and it's going to be exciting, where we have a pre-game show and a post-game show, and we're going to sell that advertising on the front of that pre-game booth.
Oh, good.
For about ten grand, that's our goal for that one, is sell it for ten grand. Because we got to get Andres to approve the appeals, we can order it and get ready for it.
So, you cannot advertise anybody, like, a business on that digital?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, you can.
That was my idea, Mr. Caballero, but I don't think, Mr. Perez came back and said that we couldn't put anybody, because I wanted to sell the ads.
Yeah, on the, on the billboard out in front of the stadium, a condition of the city was that we could build the billboard, but we could only use it for school purposes, no, no vendor advertisements or anything like that.
Wow, I didn't know that.
I'm just curious, why would they do that, or...
What's the difference between the scoreboard and that?
That was the, this was on the, the Board of Adjustments or whatever board it has to go to, variance because of the location of the billboard.
We don't know any commissioners we can work with?
Possibly, I mean, if, if we're able to do that, obviously that opens up another revenue.
Yeah, because I think that'd be good, good, some good money coming in.
That was a good idea, I know we have talked to Mr. Perez about it, because I said, man, we can just sell the ads up there and really raise the money in one year for that digital scoreboard.
Or what if we go ahead and maybe talk to one of the, to the city, and, you know, they can, you know, maybe go half of us and stuff and help them also, and they can, you know, put something on there as well?
Man.
See, but at that time, the digital...
Not the city, just the school district.
At that time, at that time, the digital, the, when we built the, it did not exist at that time, we didn't have the facilities, but time changed in the last, it's been there how many years now, five, six years? The billboard? Longer than that? See, at that time, we didn't have to consider this, but now it's here, now I don't see why we can't do it. I think we need to meet with the city and come up with a new, with a new plan.
Before we go off, how many games do you host on that turf? Because I know we have Wesco East, Wesco High.
Just about every, every night.
JV games are held there as well?
We have practices, we have practices every day, we have sub varsity games there every Thursday, Saturday, we have middle school games there right now every Saturday, and then after middle school game's over with, we start the morning with the morning Wesco High Panther flushout, and then after that, the B-Garza kids come in, and they play their games right now, since we don't have their facility ready for them at B-Garza. After B-Garza gets off the field, comes Pop Warner or Tyfa, and they get on that field until around nine o'clock at night. So, that field is under, yeah, and then after, after football season comes soccer, and then we have also worked with the city with their Pee-wee soccer league, so that field is under a lot of traffic.
How many playoff football games do, where do we host?
Sir?
How many playoff football games do we host?
Oh, my gosh, this year we had two or three games there, I believe, in the playoffs, and then we host the East and West All-Star Football Game there as well. We've got the, the meet of champions there, it's a track meet, but the turf is used a lot, that's a warm-up area.
Special Olympics as well?
That's a warm-up area. Special Olympics.
Our facility does get used a lot.
Oh, yes, yes, a lot of traffic on that facility.
Lot of traffic.
Lot of traffic. So, with all due respect, yes, sir?
How long's the process of, like, if we were to, like, how long does it take to replace turf and stuff like that?
Okay, that, that process is about twenty-five to thirty days.
Oh, it's not that bad.
Of just install, not including the ordering of the material. So, we're looking at about a month and a half to almost two months for a complete install. Now, because we have the E-layer pad that we have underneath there, the, the foundation is already done, the, the underground work is complete. So, basically, they're going to come in, they're going to roll out that carpet, they'll, they'll suction up the peat gravel and the black rubber, and then they'll lay out the new, the new turf, and then they'll, you know, install the, the black rubber and the sand with the new innovative stuff that they have.
But you don't have the money, bottom line. It's not budgeted.
No, sir.
And what you have budgeted is twelve million, Andres, and that's either for this or for facilities?
I got one more question here. On the digital billboard?
Yes, sir.
You said we spent about sixty thousand dollars a year for the different programs that get up, you know, they get put up on the, on the billboard?
Yes, sir.
If, if we would go with the digital billboard, what other expenses would, would we have other than the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
As, just electricity running, I guess, that's what I'm just saying.
Just electricity?
Yeah, we just got the quote in two days ago for the, for the final price. Which surprises, because I know when Mr. Rosso and I met with the, with the person, he kind of quoted us a million per side. So, when he quoted three sixty for both sides, we're like, I even come to Mr. Rosa, I go, hey, does it sound right? But we called him up, she was sure. Same size, I verified Mr. Obleto, the dimensions, and the dimensions were correct, and three hundred and sixty is a great price, and we'll be able to advertise a lot more programs, get all the kids up there with, no parents complained to you guys, saying, hey, my kid didn't get up there, we can put up fifteen kids every minute. I know the city, we can get, with the city, we can even utilize even better in advertising a bunch of the companies up there, too. Pay for itself in a year and a half, two years.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Go ahead and continue, Andres, since this is kind of...
Yeah. On the rest of the slides, this is the slide that showed the amount given to the schools, the basic allocation. The next one is the one for the bands, and then the remaining...
This doesn't include the hundred thousand we were talking about?
No, 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 no. And the last slide says ADA projection for the last six years, enrollment and the tax rate. I have another presentation, I'd like to show just one page, which is on the one you have. On this one? You look at the figure, oops, what did I do there? The figure on the bottom right here is a million five hundred and sixty thousand. This, right now, the budget, the way we have it, is a surplus budget. We have an excess of revenues over expenditures of what we have set aside right now. And the column we have, this column is the revenues of the general fund, all the funds from food service, gifted and talented, K, special ed, state cap, all of them, local maintenance. Then the payroll expenditures that are budgeted, the non-payroll, is the total expenditures. The difference is six point six million dollars, and then from that, we deduct half a million for the debt service fund, four million that we had talked about transferring to construction fund, and that will leave us two point one. There's, we need to deduct four hundred and forty thousand that belongs to the K fund that hadn't been properly coded. So, after we deducted, and the security magnets for the schools, and the surveillance cameras for special ed classrooms, we have approximately one million five hundred and sixty thousand dollars as a surplus budget right now. We'll, we're still reviewing it, it's not final, as you know, to see if there's anything that we missed, or we need to reclassify, or there's something else the board needs to add. We have right now some money available. We're going to continue when we come back from the, the break, we'll give you hopefully a better report that makes sure all the numbers are safe and there's no changes. We probably still have some amounts coded incorrectly, but the overall total is correct. And the other report that you have is the general fund by function, by organization code, by funds, and comparison between the years, last year and this year. Do you all have any questions on that so far?
That's it?
That's it.
And there's one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Or I guess two. On your, your biggest, biggest expense is personnel.
Yes, sir.
So, from last year to this year, was there a reduction in personnel, total personnel?
Overall personnel, there's a slight reduction, yes. And I don't, I don't have the details of the accounts, but we can get you that information.
For the next meeting?
Sure.
Can you put that?
Sure.
The reduction in staff members?
Whatever, we, we had, we had some increase in some, we added some, in some areas, some teachers.
Because that's your biggest...
That is the biggest, eighty percent of the budget is that.
And question number two, on the insurance, you put more money into the budget, but for a staff member, is there an increase per month for that staff member? Was there an increase? Okay. So, we're giving them five hundred dollars, but yet with the insurance, they're going to pay more? Right? Maybe at the next meeting, you can show us some, some figures?
We have some agenda items related to that in the board meeting tonight.
We actually have some information coming in the, in the context of the board meeting.
Okay, but is it less or more? Are they, are they paying more?
A little bit more, yes.
At each category? That's my question. The plan, your public hearing, improve the budget, I know it's on the agenda also, but what is your plan?
We'll, we'll, we'll have to hold it on August 22nd, because we have to advertise the notice of, the notice that we have to do for the public hearing, has to be at least ten days.
So, for the regular board meeting, you won't be ready?
No. No, because when we come back, we just got to certify property values, and then we need to do the calculations, and probably there'll be changes on the values. The ad will go out on that Sunday, the seventh, when we come back, and then we need to wait seven, ten days. So, the next meeting after that is the 22nd.
You answered my question. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Andres?
Sir?
Okay, then we will conclude the workshop, and anybody need a break or anything?
No, let's go, why don't we start?
Maybe Andrew over there, but...
Just, we'll, we'll start anyway. It's 6:10, and we'll call this regular board meeting to order. Item number two, establishment of a quorum, let the record reflect that all board members are present, with the exception of Mr. Lopez. Item number three, opening prayer. Dr. Lee?
The invocation will be delivered this evening by the Estrevino, the District ESL and Bilingual Director.
Be so kind of bow your heads and let us pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity you've given us to be here today. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given us of life and health and work. We are blessed beyond measure. Father, we ask you, Lord, that you give us wisdom, everyone here, wisdom and understanding that all things that are decided upon today may bring you glory and honor. I ask you, Lord, that you may bless, uh, our superintendent, our school board members and their family. Uh, keep them safe, Lord, every day of their lives, and bless them, uh, for all that they do. We also ask you, Lord, for all of our teachers, uh, all of our staff members, uh, and most especially our students, uh, throughout this summer. Lord, that your hand may be upon them, so that they may return safely, uh, as school begins. Father, we continue to ask you, Lord, for wisdom and understanding, Lord, uh, to be able to, uh, make decisions, Lord, that will always, Lord God, honor you. And I know that you will provide, uh, when we maintain integrity in all that we do, you will always provide all that is needed. We ask you all this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Item number four, pledge of allegiance, Texas pledge.
The pledge of allegiance will be delivered by Javier Salinas, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Javier. Item number five, awards and recognitions.
Tonight, there are no awards or any recognition.
Thank you. Item number six, public comments, there were, no, nobody signed up, so we'll continue on. Item number seven, superintendent's report, insurance.
And for that item, Mr. De La Rosa will come up and give us, um, the current report.
Good evening, um, Mr. Fuentes, Dr. Leo, members of the board. This is the usual, uh, health insurance report that we give every month, uh, where we break down, um, uh, costs this year versus last year. Uh, in total medical claims, uh, for the fifteen, sixteen school year, uh, the district has spent approximately eight point seven million dollars. Uh, last year at the same time, it was approximately seven million dollars, and as you can see, it's a one point seven million dollar difference in the, in the amount that we spend on medical claims alone. Uh, this is, um, uh, quite significant, uh, as you know, that we've been, uh, dealing with issues, uh, as far as high medical claims, uh, throughout the past two years on our current plan. Uh, the prescription drugs is more, uh, along with trend. Uh, this year, we spent two point eight million dollars approximately on prescription drug, uh, costs, uh, versus two point three million dollars last year. And our fixed costs have, uh, remained pretty stable, uh, two point three million dollars, uh, this year versus two point one million dollar last year. And the difference is mainly for the increases, the, uh, increase on the stop-loss premiums that we've had to pay, uh, for our plan. Total spent, uh, September one through June thirtieth, thirteen point eight million, uh, versus eleven point four million dollars last year. So this is approximately a two point four million dollar difference, and that difference of about two million dollars has been consistent over the past several months of the plan. As you can tell, uh, our greatest expenditure, our greatest increase has been in actual medical claims. Uh, this is a breakdown of the amount we spent on claims, uh, minus stop-loss reimbursements. So, uh, last year at this time, we had spent eight hundred and twenty-two, or eight hundred and twenty-three thousand on medical claims. Uh, this month, we did a little bit better, we spent seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars with a difference of approximately twenty-four thousand dollars less this month than, uh, versus, uh, uh, June of last year. And then, of course, there's the trend that you can tell, they're almost identical as far as the trend of how they're going, uh, but, uh, this year, as you can tell, that, you know, we spent significantly more on medical claims. The workers' comp, I'm pleased to say that, uh, we're looking very, very well. Uh, we had a hundred and one claims through June of this year versus a hundred and fifteen last year. Uh, total medical claims, prescription drugs, admin fees, indemnity, and all of those services incurred through June is approximately three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, uh, versus last year of five hundred and forty thousand dollars, five hundred and forty, four sixty-four, excuse me. Total paid through the month of, uh, that should be June, I apologize, total paid through the month of June, inclusive of all plan years, is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, uh, versus last year of two hundred and thirty-five, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. Uh, we have approximately four hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars in reserves.
For the new year, how much are you going to budget?
Half a million dollars.
Half a million?
Yes, sir. And that's the report.
How about on the, uh, on the health insurance claims? I mean, we're already at close to fourteen million. What did we have in the budget?
We had about twelve point six million dollars budgeted.
What are we forecasting it's gonna come in at?
It's coming in about fifteen million dollars this year.
Now, you're, in your budget roll forward, did you consider that, that shortfall as part of the number we're gonna need to balance?
We do have, we do have, uh, reserves, so I think, I think at the end of the day, I'm estimating anywhere between, uh, three to five hundred thousand dollars that will be in the red.
For this year?
For this year, correct.
But you won't have any carryforward fund balance then?
No, no.
So, well, okay, so if we're gonna be short two and a half, three million dollars?
No, we, actually, we've, um, uh, last year, we were actually the same thing, we, um, we came in, uh, uh, over budget, if you will, due to the claims and all that, but we did have significant reserves to cover the difference last year.
So what is our target reserve? I mean, we need to have something in there, don't we?
That, that's what we're anticipating, then, that's an agenda item that's coming up. We're looking about fourteen point two, fourteen point five million for next year.
So you gotta make up the two and a half, which is, you say, in fund balance, so we'll consider that a wash. Then you're gonna have to increase your budget to about fifteen million.
We're, we're, this is, this is, like I said, this has been pretty much a catastrophic year. So we're betting that, uh, we're not gonna be as bad last year, as far as people leave the plan, uh, people's conditions improve. So that's why we don't think we're gonna hit that high of a threshold next year.
So in addition to increasing your budget to protect us against future losses, you also have to add in the reserve that we're, that we should target, right?
That'd be better than that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you're looking at ultimately a three or four million dollar impact.
At least. That's correct.
What, what's your, what's your targeted fund balance or reserve balance?
On?
Five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, what do you wanna leave in the bank? I mean, what, what, we just used up two and a half million.
Right now, I'm trying to, right now, I'm trying to break even, I guess, that's, uh, that's where we're at right now, not necessarily... There wouldn't, there wouldn't be a fund balance carryover.
So typically, you have actuaries that determine these types of rates and determine what kind of funding you're gonna use or require? Who's determining that for us?
Uh, uh, my office and, uh, Valley Risk Consulting, and we did have some input from the TPA as well. So, that, I mean, they're, ultimately, they're gonna say fund to the max, but, you know, budget constraints, we're not gonna be able to fund to the max. So, and that's, that's, you know, one of the, you know, one of the risks you take when you're self-funding your health plan.
Is there, well, that was my next question, is because of that risk, should we consider full risk, a full risk plan?
I think that, uh, a fully insured plan at this point would be probably closer to eighteen, twenty million dollars versus, uh, fifteen, because remember, the insurance companies wanna make a profit. So, I don't think of, at this point in time, a, a fully insured plan is, is not economically feasible.
But typically, they have, you know, a, a larger audience, they can spread out their risk a lot better than we can by ourselves. Just like we manage risk by managing twenty-five hundred employees, they can manage it with many more thousands of employees. Is there, i- i- because you said this is kinda a catastrophic year for us, does it make sense to spread that risk? Or are you, or are we committed to a fully funded plan, I mean, a, a self-funded plan?
We're, we're committed to a self-funded plan, at least for this coming school year.
Okay. Well, keep in mind, next year, um...
We can certainly, when, when we go out to bid next year, we can certainly, uh, put out an RFP for a fully insured plan. However, it's been my experience that, that fully insured plans are gonna, if will even, because it's not, it's not only WESCO ISD, you have to understand that the scope of the entire marketplace has changed with, uh, the Affordable Care Act, and it's not really very affordable. But, uh, the, the scope of the entire insurance landscape has changed in, over the past three years. Uh, you have plans that are not offering the exchange rates anymore. I, I, I know that United, there was talk about United Insurance pulling out, so I'm not sure if, uh, that would be economically feasible for the plan, we can certainly explore it, though.
Are, are the negotiated rates that, that these companies have compared to ours, are, are ours better? I know that we have our preferred plan, where we have this network that you guys created and negotiated it.
With some facilities, yes, they are better.
Okay, now, on the, the ones that are costing us the most, who has better rates?
We're gonna take some action and remove, uh, some of those facilities from the EPO. And I think that I heard you brief the board, uh, about the facility that we're gonna be taking out of the, uh, per, out of the exclusive provider network, and taking, and putting them back in the PPO network.
But you said in the past that, like, the cancer patients, treatments, that diagnostic code, whatever that is, they typically have a higher cost to us, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Do, do, do we have the ability to negotiate better rates, or are the rates that we have about as good as it's gonna get?
Um, the rates that we have in the local providers, local facilities, uh, they are good. Uh, but if you go up north to, say, an MD Anderson, uh, they don't really negotiate with anybody. This is the price, and that's it. We do get a, we do get some discount through our, through our PPO network, but there's no incentive for them to negotiate with us, to get a lower, to get a lower...
What I meant though is, do, do the bigger companies have a better negotiating power than we do as a, as a district by ourselves?
Well, their, their contr, their contracts are confidential, so when these issues come up, when you have a big carrier that says, oh, we've got the greatest discounts in the world, trust me. You know, we have no way of validating or approving that or disproving that, we just gotta take their word for it. So it's, it's a, it's not a very pretty game, but that is the game.
Well, when you, when you, when you prepare the budget or bring it to us, I'd like to, for you to separate what you believe are going to be the claims expense, and then what's going to be our contribution to reserves, because we're gonna have to build that up. Even if it's over a period of time, we just lost two and a half million dollars. We need to try to put that back in there over time if we have to, but, and, you know, okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna bet that this is a, a better year for us. Hopefully, that's the case.
I'm gonna be like Coach Rios, I'm gonna pray before every game.
Yeah, well, I understand. But we need to make sure that we incorporate bringing that reserve back up.
And I know in years past, there's always been, uh, transfers between accounts. I know, for example, if the work comp fund is, is, you know, has an ample fund balance, I know that in the past, there has been transfers between those two accounts to build a fund balance. And that might be something that we could look at exploring as well.
Mike, I, I think, going back to what Dave was saying, and I know I brought it up to you a couple of times, give us the option of going to a full-funded plan as opposed to the self-funded plan, because even though self-funded plan may seem like the best deal, a- at the time, at least, uh, one, us as a board, two, the, the community knows, and our teachers know, and administration knows that we are providing the best product out there for them.
Yes, we are, and we have a very rich plan.
So, just to be, uh, transparent, though, at least send it out so that people can, or we can see what's out there as opposed to being self-funded.
Well, you mean send it out, I mean, we'd have to wait till next year to conduct the RFP.
Yes, next year, I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the insurance? No?
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, item number eight, consent agenda, Dr. Rivera, you have anything?
No.
Adrian?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no.
I don't have anything, Andrew?
No.
Uh, number five, just for information.
Number five, just for information, okay. Everything else is okay, so outside of number five, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez and a second by Oscar Caverro, for all the consent agenda, agenda items except for item number five. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, approval of independent contract with consultant Eriberto Reynoso of Ray-Botics for migrant problem-based learning experience.
Dr. Leo?
Did you want, have specific questions, sir?
Yeah, uh, what, what is it, uh, what, what is it that we're gonna be doing with migrant, uh, program, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Is this a program that went to...
Yes, this is the same, uh, program that we had the students working as interns for the engineer, Mr. Reynoso, and built the robot that we took to, uh, to Puerto Rico. But for this coming year, they're doing another project or problem-based learning activity. They will be his interns, and what we're hoping they will do is to create drones that will go into the pipe system for the city to check for cracks and whatnot, so those pipes can be fixed before, uh, they actually crack.
So it's a continuing program?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes, sir, it's a continuing program.
These funds come from the migrant?
Migrant department specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you wanna make a motion, or can somebody make a motion on item number five?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nieto and a second by Andrew Gonzalez to approve as presented by administration. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, item nine, discussion items, number fourteen, first reading of revision to policy DNA, local performance evaluation, evaluation of teachers. Dr. Leo?
Uh, if I may, Mr. President, this one and, uh, fourteen and fifteen are along the same lines. And what it will do, again, this is just the first reading, we're trying to get in line with the new T-test, T-Pass appraisal system that the entire state is going to this year. And so number fourteen is T-test, which is specific to teachers, and number fifteen is, uh, the, uh, performance appraisal of all other professionals that are not teachers. And that does include principals, that's T-Pass, and any other professional employees.
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding this?
No, sir.
Since there are two separate items, um, we'll go ahead and handle each of them differently. Do I have, uh, or actually, we don't have to take any action, so... Any questions? If not, we'll move on to item sixteen, interim financial report for the month of June twenty sixteen.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes. Mr. Fuentes, Dr. Leo, members of the board, you have a copy of the, uh, financial statements on your screen. On the general fund, on the local revenues, we have received a hundred and one point ninety-two percent of the revenue. We have collected more than we had budgeted. We will still get more, there's still more tax collections to come in. On state resources, the revenues of the state, we have one more payment to come in. We are at eighty-seven point four percent right now, but we will get all hundred percent. And on federal funds, we have collected ninety-four point twenty-one percent of the money budgeted. We have collected a total of ninety percent of the revenues, almost a hundred and fifty thousand that we have received. On the expenditures out of a hundred and seventy-one million dollar budget, we have spent or encumbered a hundred and thirty-two million, three hundred and forty-seven. We still have two months to go, payroll, and a few purchases that need to get paid. So far, we have spent seventy-seven point thirty-eight percent. So we have, that, that is what I was mentioning, that we were expecting to have about four point five million dollar surplus at the end of the year. Do you have any questions on that part?
Anyone have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Section ten, discussion and possible action items, number seventeen, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of orientation and mobility specialists, O and M specialists, to provide special education services for students with disabilities. RFP number sixteen dash zero eight dash fifty-one. Dr. Leo?
This is, uh, a contract brought to us on behalf, or from the Department of Special Education, to contract for services related to orientation and mobility of students with disabilities. Previously, we had, uh, had staff, uh, but we lost that individual who was providing those services, and so this year, we are, uh, proposing to contract, let's see, Mr. Gatsa, contract with, where's the name of the service?
Ruby...
Pardon?
Ruby Coronado.
Ruby Coronado?
Ruby Coronado, thank you.
That's your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Adrian Gonzalez to approve as recommended by administration. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Adrian. Item eighteen, discussion and possible action to approve an optional flexible school day program. Dr. Leo?
Members of the board, you heard in the public hearing as presented by Ms. Brewer that this is, uh, an option for those students who are at risk of dropping out of school, that we will be able to capture attendance by allowing them to come, uh, under a flexible school day rather than the traditional eight to five, or typical school day.
Same plan we've had all these years.
Yes, sir.
Hasn't changed. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Rivera, a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nineteen, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for group dental insurance. RFP number sixteen dash zero seven dash forty-one. Since we have a quorum, uh, I'm going to, I have a conflict of interest on items nineteen and twenty. I will excuse myself. Uh, my form is filed with the board secretary, and I'm just gonna walk out. If somebody could let me know when you're, uh, on item twenty-one.
Okay. Recommendation?
Recommendation, Dr. Rivera, is, uh, we did go out for proposals, there were eleven proposals. Uh, administration is recommending the proposal from Emeritus Life Insurance Company to provide group dental insurance, uh, group dental insurance benefits for the WESCO ISD employees, employee benefit plan.
And Valley Risk concurs with that?
Yes, uh, there were eleven proposals that came in, Valley Risk, uh, evaluated all eleven proposals.
So moved.
Okay.
Second. You had a run at Oscar.
Where are we at?
We are at item number twenty.
Okay, Dr. Rivera made the motion.
That was for nineteen, yes.
For nineteen, and then who made the second?
Nieto.
Nieto made, made the second. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, anybody against? Motion passes. Number twenty, discussion and possible action for the board to consider selection of servicing agent for group dental insurance, RFP number sixteen dash zero seven dash forty-one.
Dr. Leo?
Yes, Mr. Cavaiero, I'm sorry, Mr. Cavaiero, the selection of a servicing agent is entirely at the discretion of the board. Uh, there were three names that came with the Emeritus proposal, which was Tamez Financial Services, Salasad Insurance Group, and Gallagher Benefits out of Wasico. However, there are a list of all of the other agents that submitted the proposal or requested consideration, and that's, the decision is up to the board.
So moved, on your recommendation.
On the three?
On the three. On Tamez Financial Services, Salasad Insurance Group, and Gallagher Benefit.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, for clarification, uh, Mr. Chairman, what is the recommendation?
To approve the Tamez Finance Services, Salasad Insurance Group, and Gallagher Benefits as were recommended.
And the, the recommendation, at least, uh, under the rationale, indicates that the recommended proposal from Emeritus includes the three agents, so is that the recommendation that it's being based on?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, Adrian made the motion, Rivera seconded the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Number twenty-one?
Go get it, Dave.
We are at twenty-one.
Thank you, Oscar. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for fleet auto liability and physical damage, uh, general liability, crime and law enforcement insurance, RFP number sixteen dash zero seven dash forty-two.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, uh, we did conduct an RFP for said products, we had one, uh, submitter, and we're recommending that the board approve the proposal from Travelers Insurance as submitted by Shepherd Wall and King Insurance Group.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Andrew Gonzalez and a second by Isidoro Nieto to approve as recommended by administration. Any further discussion?
Only one proposal?
Only one, we received, yes, and that's fine, they do a great job.
Any further discussion? If not, all.
Pardon me, was there an increase from last year?
Approximately six thousand dollars.
On each, on each one?
Uh, total, for the total casualty package. I have it here. Uh, last year, the total casualty package was two hundred and fourteen thousand, uh, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. This year, the proposal came in at two hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-two, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for workers' compensation, third-party administrative services, and excess insurance, RFP number sixteen dash zero seven dash forty-three.
Um, yes, Mr. President, this was also, um, uh, there was an RFP conducted, uh, for workers' comp, third-party administrative services, there were three proposals that we received, and tied with this is the excess reinsurance for workers' comp, and there are also, uh, three proposals as well. Administration is recommending TriStar Risk Management to provide workers' compensation, third-party administrative services, and the proposal from Safety National as submitted by Shepherd Wall and King Insurance Group to provide excess reinsurance. We'd further like, uh, to be given the authorization to enter into negotiations with TriStar regarding ancillary charges.
And that's, you're comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez and a second, second by Oscar Cavaiero to approve as recommended by administration. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-three, discussion and possible action to amend the district's health benefit programs, employee contribution, and add an additional tier level employee plus one child.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I, uh, this was, uh, going back to the superintendent's item that we were discussing earlier, um, we are asking that the board, uh, approve the, uh, employee contributions as outlined, uh, in the, uh, in the rationale. In addition, we're also adding an employee plus one child tier to the plan. And that should, uh, that should help some, um, employees with only one child on the plan to, um, to have a little more fair, uh, contribution to the plan.
I think we had asked about that earlier in the year, correct?
I've been asking for this for four or five years.
Yeah, well, this past year.
Before you left, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Because it was just employee and, employee and children, not specific, right?
Correct, employee plus one child versus, uh, we had an employee with one child would pay the same premium as an employee with, say, six children.
Right.
So we're just trying to make this a little more equitable for those employees.
So, okay. So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Isidoro Nieto to approve as recommended by administration, second by Oscar Cavaiero. Any further discussion?
Good for you, Mike.
I'm sorry?
I said, good job.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you, finally. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-four, discussion and possible action for the board to approve a change order to the project for the installation of vinyl tile at various campuses, CSP number sixteen dash zero five dash thirty-five. Dr. Leo?
Mr. Sanchez, we'll be bringing you additional information. And Mr. Garcia.
Okay, uh, good evening, thank you, uh, Dr. Leo, Mr. Fuentes, members of the board. Uh, just a little update on the tile project that we, uh, began, uh, I guess, maybe about four or five weeks ago, maybe a little longer. On this change order, the reason why we're requesting it is because, uh, actually, uh, Mr. Jones has done a tremendous job, um, with this project. We've already completed three of the campuses, just, uh, and two of the campuses, we had minor setbacks, one of them was that we, uh, made a mistake in ordering some of the tiles, so that has been ordered, should be coming in this week. Initially, what we did was, we came up with a timeline for the installation of the tile at the five campuses, um, and we are ahead of schedule. And, uh, the, the only setbacks that we had, of course, was that order that we, that we placed, and that should be coming in pretty soon, and that should be hopefully finished by the week, uh, probably in about a couple of weeks. The other problem that we ran into is that in, uh, in removing the old tile at the airport campus, we found some mold, and so, it's, um, excuse me, some asbestos, uh, so what we needed to do is to, uh, do an abatement, and that's where we currently are right now. I believe that should be, the gentlemen are here, uh, by the eighteenth?
It starts on the eighteenth.
Yeah, it starts on the eighteenth. Uh, we are on schedule, um, so, Mr. Sanchez?
Yeah, the, the reason for the change order is the cost of the additional tile that we had to buy for, to replace one of our schools, and we also have a need for tile at the band halls of Big Arza Middle School. So we wanted to do is use the tile that we bought already, that we cannot use at one of the schools, to put it at Big Arza, we wanted to have Jones Construction install it there, since they have the manpower, uh, they can do it faster than our main department can. So that is what the change order is for.
So, so the band hall wasn't part of the original?
No, it, it wasn't part of it, no.
So basically, it's needed?
It, it is needed, we were gonna buy tile, and maybe we're gonna install it later on.
So moved.
As they will finish their summer projects.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez to approve as recommended by administration, and a second by Dr. Rivera. Before we move on, Ivan, there's no, uh, it looks like it's way below a threshold as far as change orders are concerned.
Right, as far as the percentage, twenty-five percent is the.
So, we're okay legally?
Can I make a comment? They just, uh, the cost is, uh, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-two cents, and the change order extends the completion date by seventeen days.
That's fine.
To August fifteenth.
More work, more time. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-five, discussion and possible action for the board to select an audit firm to conduct the independent fiscal and compliance audit of the district for fiscal year ending August thirty-first, twenty sixteen, with the option to extend the contract for two additional one-year terms. RFQ that, uh, sixteen dash zero seven dash forty. Dr. Leo?
I know that we had previously brought to the board, uh, information on three of the firms that submitted, um, uh, considered, that they wanted to be considered to conduct the audit, and two, you visited with Noel Garza and Patio Brown and Hill, and the third firm was Whitley Penn. I believe we have representatives from each of the firms here tonight. Is Whitley Penn here? No? Oh, okay. But I know that Mr. Sanchez had been in communication with the firm from Houston, that, apparently, there was some miscommunication, and that firm did, did, uh, not make it to the meeting where the others presented their, uh, services.
And they indicated they wanted to be considered for the selection, and, uh, one of the things we did, we, uh, requested prices from the audit, 'cause, see, we did it as a request for qualifications instead of a request for proposals, we had not asked for the price upfront, in a discussion with the legal counsel, Mr. Perez, uh, we agreed that using the government code, we could actually request for, uh, qualifications from firms that were qualified, and also pay for the fee at a reasonable and fair price. So we went ahead and asked the company, the companies on Friday to send out their proposal fee. We got a response on Saturday and two this morning, and we revised the agenda, I'm gonna give a revised copy of the agenda to, to have.
So are these complete? The one on the update?
Oh.
The ones you gave us?
Those are correct.
They're correct?
That's why they had given us.
Uh-huh.
That's more detail, but this is just.
That's more detail.
Rather than what was in the board packet? Okay, replace it with this, please. The one you were just handed does have additional information.
Yes, the, the boxes in blue show the, the prices for the first year, second year, and third year, but we had said, we wanted to do an option to extend for up to two one-year terms. Well, one of the firms, the one from Houston, had disclosed in their qualification statement response, that that data was confidential, so I highlighted in orange, so the board knows that information. Usually, when something gets approved, people disclose information, or they ask us, but they told us not to disclose that information, so, that's why I made the, the note there. On the second page, we have the, the criteria, the board, the, we use, that we, you know, the board didn't approve it, we use it for the qualification statement, for the board to use to do the ranking, and we added there about the fees, and we also have copies of the ranking sheet that I'm gonna give you, so you all can do the ranking based on the points that are described there. And then you all can turn them in to me, and I can summarize them, and so that, we can have the total for the three companies, to see who the board ranks first to select them.
So we're gonna just rank them real quick, right?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
While he's totaling that, do we move on to something else? You want us to wait?
You, you can.
Do we need to make any particular motion, or just?
No, you, you, if you're not taking action, you can, you can just, at some point, move to revisit that, this item.
Do you have all the papers? All right, while he's, uh, totaling that up, we'll go ahead and move on to item number twenty-six, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the annual review and approval of the district's investment policy.
Well, for this one, we need Mr. Sanchez as well.
Yeah, he might be delegating the adding.
That makes two.
Well, they can add it up for him. All right, Andres, we're twenty-six.
Hi, Buck. This agenda item is to annual review of the investment policy that we have. The overall criteria that we, that we use, that we need to have is, uh, that the one has to use for the safe, uh, safety of the investments of the school district, being that this is taxpayer money. With the emphasis that we use safety in the investment, management of the investment that we have, the investments are liquid, and what maturity that we have, that we don't invest too far out, no more than a year. For example, that we diversify the investments, so that we don't have them all in, in one place. Usually, when you have, uh, CDs, pools, uh, treasuries, or stocks, or some other investment, you gotta keep an eye on the different things, and that's one of the ways to diversify, and then I want you to put it in one, because if one of the investment goes bad, we could lose all the money. The, uh, the way right now, the district investments are, all the money that we have, we have it in the pools, we have three pools that we use, the, uh, Lone Star Investment Pool, First Public, the Texas Term, and the Tex Pool. And, uh, the money that we have, we have it on, uh, funds that are available every day, we can put money in any day, we can take money out any day. We don't have to give them notice, uh, we're gonna take it out in seven days, or stuff like that. We don't have any construction funds, for example, we don't have to worry about planning that money, like, we would have to have a bond, for example, if we have a project for a year, that we more or less calculate how much each month we're gonna have to pay for construction, so we schedule the treasuries to mature on that day, or the CDs, and if we don't have any of that, the money is in pools. The rates right now are very good compared to anything else.
They're good, but very low.
No, that, yes, they, they are low, but.
So Andres, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
We have money in construction that we don't use, right? It's, it's there.
We have some money in construction, yes.
Like, for example, the, the gym at Central.
Right.
Had a million dollars, has been there since I was superintendent.
Yes, sir.
The money's there, right? Earning very little interest.
It's earning interest, yes.
So, if we weigh more, that same project now is gonna cost a lot more, so we're getting very little money on the, on the investments, because the money's there, not being used. So I'm thinking, let's spend the money? Let's spend the.
So I'm thinking, let's spend the money. Let's spend the money on the facilities now, because in a year, two years, it's gonna be more. So they're making money out of us, and yet we're keeping the money there, earning practically nothing.
Correct.
So I'd like to spend the money on the projects, if we have the money, as soon as we can.
I wanted to, we can discuss it. We mentioned earlier that work workshop to the board to tell us which way to go of spending, and which part of it we spend there on first.
We're making the millionaires, really.
And we just have to prioritize, and then start with the facilities most in need that we need.
Yeah.
I agree, you know, but we need to utilize that money.
Well, now that the bond election is behind us, we can move forward the right way.
Correct.
From the, the district, we have three investment officers, which is...
So you, you need a motion, Andres?
Yes.
You're through, you're through already? You finished?
Well, I was just gonna mention that we have three investment officers, Silves Quevill, Jesse Forcak, and myself. And we all go to training. Every two years, we have to have hours. It used to be ten, now it's five. So I'll be going to a training on July twenty-eighth. I'll make up a vacation day later, I'm just kidding. I'll go to vacation. There's some questions that I wanted to ask related to investments, and I will bring them up to the, the lady that's presenting.
This is your recommendation to continue?
Yes. Right now, the way we have it, we don't need to change.
Motion by Dr. Rivera to approve as presented by administration, and a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-six, discussion, I'm sorry, twenty-seven, discussion on possible action for the board to consider approval to set up a meeting date for a public hearing on the proposed budget and proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2016-2017, Andres.
Yes, Mr. Fuentes, earlier during the budget workshop, I was discussing the date. I would like to request that the board approve August twenty-second of the date to set the public hearing for the proposed budget and tax rate. And that is being the fact that certified appraisal values, appraisal district values on property will be released until July twenty-seventh, so we'll get them the first week of August, when we come back from the vacation break.
What's the date again? July twenty-seven?
August twenty-second. Oh, July twenty-seven. Usually twenty-fifth, but that's gonna be in the weekend. So we're gonna, we're gonna release them on Monday, the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so August twenty-second is a Monday.
It's a Monday, yes.
And that's three, no, two weeks after our regularly scheduled board meeting.
Well, I'm looking at, advertising the, the notice on the paper on August the seventh, Sunday, and since the notice cannot be posted less than ten days before the approval, the fifteen wouldn't be enough. So the next one would be the twenty-second.
Right. So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nieto, and a second by Adrian Gonzalez to approve as recommended by administration. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. So we're pending item twenty-five.
Do you have calculations?
Bring that back after executive session.
Finalization?
Can we do it?
All right.
So we'll address item twenty-five as we, once we reconvene an open meeting after the executive session. So as of now, we are going to section eleven, closed meeting to discuss item twenty-eight, Personnel Matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. A, Employment of Personnel and New Hires; B, Resignations; C, Deliberation Regarding the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal, or Proposed Termination of a District Employee. Number one, Interim Superintendent's Recommendation for the Position of Director of Migrant Programs. Number two, Interim Superintendent's Recommendation for the Position of Campus Instructional Facilitator for Kleckler Held Elementary School. Item three, Interim Superintendent's Recommendation for the Position of Principal for the Wesaco ISD's Twenty-First Century Early College High School. Item four, Interim Superintendent's Recommendation for the Position of Principal for Horton AEP. And item D, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Superintendent's Search, Texas Government Code 551.071. It is now six fifty-seven, and we are in executive session.
Andres, Andres, where are you?
Move some tapes around. It's eight eighteen, and we are back in open session. We will revisit item twenty-five, discussion on possible action for the board to select an audit firm to conduct the independent fiscal and compliance audit of the district for fiscal year ending August thirty-first, 2016, with the option to extend the contract for two additional one-year terms, RFQ number sixteen dash zero seven dash forty. Let me read the total points as accumulated through our rankings. Ranked first is Noel Garza CPA with 545 points. Ranked two was Patio Brown and Hill LLP with 482 points, and third was Whitley Penn at a, with 435 points. So based on that ranking, I'm, we'll entertain a motion now.
So move.
Second.
The motion being that we'll accept the rankings?
The rankings.
Okay. Do we need to take any action as far as that goes, Ivan?
Yeah, it's, actually, the agenda language is to select an audit firm to conduct the, the audit. The price is already identified, so we'll just negotiate the terms of the agreement.
So would, do you mind making an actual recommendation on the, the firm, which would be, if you ranked number one, Noel Garza CPA?
Okay. I make the motion to approve Noel Garza. Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Nieto to accept the ranking of Noel Garza CPA, making that recommendation to hire the auditor, correct?
Correct.
And then a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Onto Personnel Matters, number twenty-eight, letter A, Employment of Personnel and New Hires. Dr. Leo.
Members of the board, I ask that you accept the recommendation of new hires as discussed in executive session.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Andrew Gonzalez, second by Adrian Gonzalez. Do I have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Letter B, Resignations, this is a non-action item. Item C, Deliberation Regarding the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal, or Proposed Termination of a District Employee. Number one, Interim and Superintendent's Recommendation for the Position of Director of Migrant Programs. Dr. Leo.
Board members, I recommend that you approve for the position of Director of Migrant Programs, Mr. George Lopez.
So move. Second.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez, and a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Do I have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. He's not here by chance, is he?
No.
Okay. Item two, Interim Superintendent's Recommendation for the Position of Campus Instructional Facilitator for Kleckler Held Elementary School. Dr. Leo.
Board members, at Kleckler Held Elementary School for the Position of Campus Instructional Facilitator, I recommend Ms. Mary Lou Reyna.
So move. Second.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez, a second by Oscar Cavaiero. Do I have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Is she here? Item three, Interim Superintendent's Recommendation for the Position of Principal for the Wesaco ISD Twenty-First Century Early College High School. Dr. Leo.
Members of the board, I recommend as principal at the Wesaco ISD's Twenty-First Century Early College High School, Mr. Marco A. Samora.
So move.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, Interim Superintendent's Recommendation for the Position of Principal for Horton AEP. Dr. Leo.
Members of the board, for the position of principal at Horton AEP, I make no recommendation at this time.
This is then a non-action item? Ivan? Thank you. Item D, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Superintendent's Search, Texas Government Code 551.071 is a non-action item. Section thirteen, adjournment. Have a motion? Thank you. It's eight twenty-three, and this meeting is now adjourned.